Good afternoon. And thank you very much for gathering here at this panel session on cyber arms control and related challenges. My name is Anakin T. Kringas. I am the Senior Fellow for Cybersecurity at the IIISS. And it is my great privilege today to lead a panel of three distinguished experts whom I will briefly introduce in a minute. And meanwhile, I encourage you to pick up their full CVs in our conference app. Now, Ukraine may seem to be stealing the spotlight from cyber recently. But I think indeed Ukraine and other conflicts and contestation in the world shows an increasing cyber element. And therefore, the topic here is very timely. And indeed, the initiative for international cyber arms control comes from Moscow. Because in October 1998, a letter by a Russian Foreign Minister to the UN Secretary General condemned the creation of information weapons and the threat of information wars. Understood by Russia then as actions taken by one country to damage the information resources and systems of another country while at the same time protecting its own infrastructure. Now, Russia concluded in 1998 that the emergence of a fundamentally new area of international confrontation was not permissible as it might lead to an escalation of an arms race based on the latest developments of the scientific and technological revolution. That was 15 years ago. And with this letter, Moscow or, yes, Russia, and Russia proposed a draft resolution on developments in the field of information and telecommunications in the context of international security. And since then, four groups, now four groups of governmental experts have met under the umbrella of the First Committee to discuss the issue. Now, we are very far from consensus as the American-led Alliance of Liberal Democracies has so far insisted primarily that cybersecurity is achieved by investments at a national level. And that cyber contestation should be regarded as new normal for policy and strategy purposes both by the private sector and governments. So the progress in the First Committee has been modest with a common conclusion, though in 2013, that international law was an essential element in mitigating international information security threats. Now, in this session today, we have a rare opportunity to hear rather diverse views on the subject. And introducing our panelists in the order that they will address the issue. Then, on my far left, Dr. Gutz Neunek has years of expertise in dealing with arms control issues and has recently focused on development, relevant developments in the cyber domain. Dr. Xuelong Di is the author of a recent Chinese perspective on cyber arms control and the US role in international cyber contestation. And Dr. Marco Rossini comes from a legal background and has studied the legality of cyber weapons and operations with special emphasis on the use of cyber for nuclear arms control purposes. Now, I will open up the floor to the speakers in this order. And I, of course, look very much forward to the questions and comments from the floor thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairwoman, for the kind introduction. And also, thank you very much to the organizers for inviting me and to putting this very interesting subject on the agenda of that conference. I'm a physicist and an arms controller, so I'm very much convinced about the merits of arms control, which is not only treaties and number counting, but it's about much more. And the key question here is, of course, whether cybersecurity could be, or let's say, that arms control experiences and measures could be applied to cyber or not. That's, I think, for me personally, the key question. Unfortunately, we have several discourses and discussions going on here. First is about internet governance, who controls the internet? Second debate is on critical infrastructures, how vulnerable are they? And could they be attacked by others? And it is useful to attack them. And the third one is on cyber war. And to be very clear on that, I don't see actually that a cyber war really has occurred. But we know from history that new technologies also fill in sometimes in military conflicts. And the question is, can such an inflow be prevented? Cybersecurity is a global concern for everybody, I mean, even for the people who are using it, actually, you know? And it is now, the importance is now increasing dramatically for business, for politics, for the military, and also, of course, for the individual. All of you know how dependent we are on the cyberspace, cyber tools. And this makes also the modern societies more vulnerable to some interference on that field. And it must be also clear that technology does not solve that. We, on one side, wanted to have an open, reliable, peaceful internet. On the other side, we wanted to be as secure and safe as possible. And this is not possible to organize with technology. Technology is inherent vulnerable, and this will be the case even for the next decades. So we have to live with that kind of vulnerabilities, which are used, unfortunately, by criminals, by terrorists, by patriarchy hackers, by different people, which you sometimes do not know. So the question here is, what can states and organizations really do to maintain the internet as an open, free, safe, and peaceful domain? Also, technologically, it must be clear that cyberspace is, as such, very hard to define. It's not only the internet, it is much more. It's smartphones, these are space-based assets, many, many things. So cyberspace and the cybersphere is the global set of communication systems, computers, which are more and more linked together. I think the attacks on Estonia, on Georgia, Iran, Saudi Arabia showed that there is also an international dimension of the debate. And we know that there are also mutual accusations between the US and China. And they are putting some strain on the Sino-Chinese relations. So cyber is also now part of international politics and international security. But again, I think a cyber war, strategic cyber war, whatever that is, has not yet occurred. Occurred, but several categories are conceivable in principle. The first one is a classical strategic cyber war, which will be restricted only to the cybersphere. So someone fighting in the cybersphere, I think this is very unlikely. Although science fiction literature very often is pointing to that kind of conflict. Then, I think more likely is a conventional war, which starts with a cyber attack. And then, a cyber attack also can transform to a full-fledged conventional war. Or a conventional war can be accompanied by cyber attacks, thus escalating a conflict. Military would call that electronic warfare. But it is not only electronic, it is, given the current technologies, even much more. I think we do have hints, especially from American sources, for example, Mr. Snowden, that preparations for the use of offensive cyber actions are developing. I don't want to go in any details, but notions like Plan X by DARPA, the leaked presidential initiative, Presidential NPP 20 directive, clearly gives, the US President gives the agencies the order to identify targets for possible cyber operations. And there are many, many countries which are establishing cyber commands. And very often, we do not know for what purpose. It is, for me, even unclear what, let's say, the German armed forces are doing there. Maybe it's simply electronic warfare, maybe it is not. So in fact, if you look to all these kind of preparations, and I can list much more here, then there are some preparations going on. And some argue that this could lead to some kind of digital arms race, that states are using, equipping themselves for using that in an operative mode. Richard Clark argues that a cyber war has already begun as nations prepare the battlefield by hacking into each other's networks and infrastructure. And if you look to Pentagon sources, the military declares that the cyberspace is now a new domain of warfare. Many internet activists would be very surprised to hear that. But I think it's stated, and I think we have to deal with it. The question is, how can we do it? And how could we learn from arms control? Modern arms control, as you know, was developed during the Cold War to place political or legal constraints on deployment and disposition of national means. That was the original idea, with measures to strengthen crisis stability, damage limitation, and war prevention. And as a result, we have a rich toolbox, starting from notifications, restraint measures, to verification procedures. They all have been developed. And I think some of these ideas could be applied to the cyber field. But of course, governments have to accept that. If they don't do, then we would, of course, have no any successes here. There have been several proposals made, cyber convention, Chinese and Russia has proposed a code of conduct, others, no first use declaration applying the principles of the law of armed conflict, principles like discrimination, proportionality, distinction to the cyber domain. But there are a lot of problems, to be honest, and obstacles we have to overcome. Otherwise, it will be very hard to find any arms control solution. And the problems are, it's a dual-use technology, it is hard to verify because of the attribution problem. We have many actors, including the industry. The industry is sometimes a much more important player than the state government because all these networks are owned by industry, multinational companies, and so on, and so on. And then we also have to define what is a cyber weapon. It's not so easy to do, but I think my Chinese colleague will dwell in that more in detail. So to conclude, I would say the purpose of arms control in the cybersphere is preventing digital arms race in cyberspace, to prevent vertical and horizontal verification, proliferation and verification. We don't want it to prevent verification, on the contrary. Then prevention of militarization and weaponization of an open, secure, and peaceful internet, strengthening crisis stability by avoiding miscalculations in a crisis, protecting critical infrastructure, and so on, and so on. So I think the aims can be clearly defined. I think the community says here that a cyber convention is actually not on the table. But the first would be to include some confidence-building measures. And this is how arms control very often starts, by developing cooperation, by discussing common language, what is a cyber attack, what is a cyber weapon, what are the national institutions dealing with it? So at the end, I would add to my talk, let's say, seven points which can be discussed, more or less. We know that the UN GGE is already discussing it, the OSCE has a working group working on concrete confidence-building measures, the Asian Regional Forum is working on it. I think these are very encouraging signals here. So I think it's on strengthening early warning, cooperating government to government, military to military, accelerating research. These are unilateral measures. But if it comes to reciprocal measures, then sharing and exchanging national views on threats, national terminology organization would be very important. Even discussing doctrines, what is a defense measure? What would be interpreted as an offense, as an offensive strike? What are possible targets? And maybe no first use on attacking specific targets could be a result of such a debate. So I think the OSCE and the Asian Regional Forum are a good platform for it. But at the end, we also have to educate people, we have to include industry, we have to establish a common language, and we can also use the law of armed conflict for discussing the applicability of it. And I'm sure our Italian colleague has some more ideas. We know that there's the Italian manual, which already tries to work through all the subjects. And I think it is utmost important to have computer scientists, lawyers, and politicians and officials which are working together on these kind of issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gutz, and I'll give it over to the president.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I think this topic, cyber arms control, is a very important and timely one for, especially at this very important and famous meeting. Especially in recent years, the world has witnessed a various, a lot of internet incidents. And a lot of countries have already released various policy papers on cyber strategies and with a view to protect cybersecurity. In addition, many countries also created cyber commands and built cyber armies and increased their investments in cybersecurity. So thus leaving us an impression that the militarization and/or weaponization of the cyberspace is becoming a more, and a more obvious trend for the international community. So under this background, I think the cyber arms control is becoming a increasing, is of increasing necessity for the international community to tackle with. However, so far, we have a few such kind of cyber arms control measures. So it is of high necessity for us to discuss this very, I think, pressing issue. However, as just now, Mr. Professor Gruiser, right, mentioned, we also face many challenges, he tackled this problem. As far as I see, in addition to what Professor Gruiser said, I have some other points to add. First is about, challenge one is about what is a kind of definitional challenge. For example, if you say we're trying to endeavor to engage in a cyber arms control, so what are cyber arms? So what are cyber weapons? The viruses or the ICTs is composed of what? Composed of zero and one, the bit and base, better bits. So can we call this kind of, this kind of things as weapons? So here comes the unique nature of cyber weapons. What is the purpose? What is the use of weapons? The weapons are used to kill, to kill people, kill other people. So can the cyber weapons kill people? As far as I see, so far, we have not witnessed any such kind of incident of a cyber attack killing, killing, or caused physical casualties or killing some people. This is one point. Another point is the chemical weapons, the conventional weapons are visible. You can see where they are, how many, they are very, they can be verified. But I think the cyber weapons are invisible, they're installed, they are existent in, maybe, in my, in everybody's computers. We don't know where they are. So they can exist everywhere, every computer all over the world. So this is also the unique feature of the cyber, if there are, if there are some cyber weapons. And another feature for cyber weapons is its selectiveness in choosing targets. The missiles and other weapons, they, when killing somebody, killing its enemies, they are not as, they're not selective. But the cyber weapons can be very selective. For example, the, we know the Stuxnet worm is very sophisticated and highly precise in targeting the Iranian nuclear facilities. So this is also different from the traditional weapons. Another feature of the cyber weapons is a low cost. Now, many people are talking about the low cost of getting a, getting kind of a worm, getting kind of, kind of viruses from the internet. But my idea is that maybe, for example, as far as the Stuxnet concern, maybe the cost is not as low as we imagine. Another challenge is about the political struggle between various powers and countries because every country is, are in different stages of development of ICTs. So every country have different concerns and opinions. And especially for the developing countries, we are concerned about the technological hegemony exercised by some big powers. And lastly, as the ICT is something new, for, still something new, I think, for many countries. And its potential benefits are still not recognized by many people and countries. So in this case, no country will, will give up this kind of benefits brought about by the ICTs. And for the developing countries, for the less developed countries, maybe ICTs or cyber weapons is kind of a means for them to enhance their power, to gain a kind of asymmetric power against the big ones in the, in some possible, future possible conflict. And finally, with, about the way out in the future. And last month, we, CRI, as China Institute of Internet Studies, we published, released a report on cyber war preparedness and cyberspace, arms control, and the US. We try to tackle this question from a macro perspective rather than solely focusing on arms control. We think that when maintaining or protect the cyberspace, now the most pressing challenge for the international community is making rules for cyberspace. I think we have several levels of rules. First is general levels, for example, cyber sovereignty. And we have, we can have some specific rules, for example, rules on fighting cyber crimes and, and rules on fighting cyber crime, and cyber terrorism, and rules for regulating cyber warfare. And we have rules for regulating cyber arms, arms control. My opinion is that we can pose a lot of these questions at different levels within framework of the UN. And not only UK, but also the regional level, just as Professor Gruiser just now mentioned, on the regional level, OSCE and OSA, and now ASEAN also doing this kind of work to build a kind of regional CBMs. I think all of this are very good progress in the field of cyberspace. And another point is, one thing is very simple. I think the big powers, especially the most powerful, say it's true, should have set a very good example for our countries to follow. For example, why I think this is important, especially in international relations? If the big powers cannot set a very good example for others, others will follow, follow suit, and a kind of vicious circle will follow on. I think the stumbling, the stumbling case is a kind of, is a case in point. And finally, maybe in the future, a kind of cyber convention will come, but we don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, and Marco, over to you.
Now is it? Thank you. And thanks, Anakin, and thanks to the organizers for inviting me. I thought I would use this five minutes to slightly digress from the topic of cyber arms control and raise your attention to another possible relation between cyber and arms control in its broader sense. I will express my views on cyber arms control and on my colleagues' presentations later. So I'm slightly cheating, I'm like doubling my time somehow. The point I'm trying to make is that cyber can obviously be seen as a threat. But I was wondering also, when I, when I first approached the topic, whether cyber could also be an asset for the course of nonproliferation? So whether you could use for recent cyber operations in order to prevent the proliferation of WMDs, in particular of nuclear weapons? And this is not just an hypothetical scenario because this is something that has allegedly already occurred. I'm using the word allegedly and I stress it because nothing in, in, in the cyber area is, is sure or there is forensic evidence that proves anything. So all we can do is, in most cases, assumptions and rumors. So you're probably familiar with the Stuxnet worm, which was mentioned by, by my colleagues. Stuxnet was warm, then again allegedly targeted the Iranian nuclear program. In particular, it targeted the centrifuges, the gas centrifuges and the nattens uranium enrichment facilities. They, the worm penetrated the software, the Siemens software that operates the facility, and it causes an excessive speed in the rotation of the centrifuge, sending them out of control and allegedly damaging a certain number of them. Some say very few, others says up to 20%. Others says that Iran was sent back a few years in its program because of, because of Stuxnet. Interestingly, the worm was activated only by the presence of that specific Siemens software. So you could have had it in your computer, but it would have not caused any harm to you because you presumably didn't have that specific software. And that's what, as, together with its sophistication, that's what raised, raised suspicions, and perhaps more than that, that certain states, in particular the United States and Israel, were behind the operation. Actually, in a New York Times article, it was, it was suggested it was part of a broader campaign codenamed Operation Olympic Games, that also included cyber exploitation operation for the collection of sensitive data. And they also have very scary names from, sounds like sci-fi characters like Dooku and Flame that are, again, allegedly operated together with, with Stuxnet in order to disrupt Iran's nuclear program. So you could, of course, if this is all true, you could use cyber attacks to disrupt the proliferator's nuclear activities. You could also use cyber espionage to, to, to collect evidence that a certain state is actually undertaking a military nuclear program. The question is, are these activities, whether they have occurred already or not, are these activities, A, lawful, and B, effective means of preventing proliferation? Now, with regard to the lawfulness, and I'll have to be brief because I'm aware that I only have five minutes, so I can only make points. If you want, we can discuss them in the Q and A session. With regard to the lawfulness, it all depends on what kind of operation we are talking about. In particular, there is this, this distinction that is now, I think, clearly established and on which everyone agrees on, between cyber operations that are above the level of a use of armed force, so that are a use of, that can be equivalent, considered equivalent to a use of armed force, a kinetic armed force, which is, and again, I think I can quite safely say that there is agreement on what these operations are. quite safely say that there is agreement on what these operations are. It's those cyber operations that result, or are intended to result in material damage to property or persons. So they have the same effects as a kinetic weapons. Those cyber operations are considered a use of armed force. And that, for those operations, the legal framework is, is the UN Charter. And the UN Charter prohibits the use of armed force unless you are the victim of an armed attack, which is something stronger than a, a, a mere use of force. Now, the mere possession, let alone the development of a WMD is not in itself an armed attack. So it is unlikely that, again, legally speaking, you could use a cyber operation amounting to a use of force to, against a state that is developing or, again, possessing nuclear weapons, unless that state uses or is about to use them against you. Then you have the vast majority of cyber operations, those that are below that level. For those cyber operations, this is not something that you can do lightly either, because they are presumably interventions in the internal affairs of that state. However, they can become lawful if that cyber operation, again, below the level of the use of force, is adopted, is a reaction to a previous violation of international law by the proliferator. So you have to demonstrate that that state has breached an international obligation, say, the MPT or the CWC or another proliferation obligation, and that you're entitled to react because you're the state that has been injured by that violation. Third category would be cyber espionage operations. This is, if you want, the gray area, because it is not clear whether these are prohibited activities. Espionage in general is something that is tolerated, and you, you'll see the most different opinions on whether espionage is an unlawful activity in international law, and that includes cyber espionage as well. I've seen probably the OP, and the manual, by the way, does not reach any consensus on, on that, if I understand it correctly. Although one of the experts that, that drafted the manual in, in, in another context has suggested that if the intrusion, if it is an intrusion into the cyber infrastructure of a state's cyber infrastructure located on its territory, would be a violation of that state's sovereignty. I doubt that these cyber espionage activities, to, to understand whether a state is proliferating, can be seen as national, as tech, national technical means of verification, because usually these national technical means of verification are accompanied by the clause that they have to be, like in the, in the CTBT. They have to be conducted consistently with international law and including the respect for the sovereignty of the state concerned. Therefore, they do not allow territorial intrusive activities. We are talking about remote sensing, satellite observation, but nothing more than that. And I'll go to the, to my final points, which is whether they are effective as counter-proliferation operations. Well, in the case of Stuxnet, they weren't, assuming that that was their purpose, because the Iranian nuclear program has not been slowed down significantly, and there's not been any permanent, any permanent impact. Some say that actually it was counterproductive, because Iran may have actually understood the problem and may have learned something about cyber attacks and therefore implemented better cyber defenses, so to prevent further and more sophisticated, more sophisticated attacks. Consider also that more in general, they, these, these infrastructures, as all critical infrastructures, are not connected to the internet. So you cannot just send a virus hoping that it will reach through the internet, the targeted facility. These usual, these facilities are normally, as they say, air-gapped, so you have to get close access, to have, you have to send one of yours that download the, the, or, the virus on, on the spot, or it could be contained in, 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 in another, in another device, which was allegedly the case of Stuxnet. And, and I'll just jump to my conclusion. It has also been suggested that these cyber, cyber operations, they can be perhaps useful in the very early stages of a development of a WMD, in particular nuclear weapons, but not in the later stages, like when the, the weapon has been assembled, or even worse, when it is assembled already. So to conclude, there are advantages and disadvantages in these types of operations for states. The advantage, the main advantage is that you can always deny that you did that. So politically speaking, it is less costly than a kinetic bombing of that facility where allegedly a nuclear program has been undertaken. Also, from a humanitarian point of view, of course, it's less costly, because it's less likely that you will have loss of lives and, and injuries. The disadvantages are the fact that they, as I said, their legality is doubtful. There are also escalation risks, of course, because the state that is undertaking this operation is allegedly digitally developed and, and therefore can also be very exposed to counter-cyber operations. And although Stuxnet was, was indeed very discriminant, however, with cyber, you know where you start, but you don't necessarily know where you end. So there's always the risk of the spreading of malware, which might interiorly spread uncontrollably. So, again, this is, this is something that perhaps we may want to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I open the floor for questions. Please, when you get the microphone, introduce yourself and then feel free to address any of the panelists over here, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Sharon. Appreciate educated by all the three presentations. Two very quick comments. One is, well, both regarding the presentation by Dr. Marco Rosini, a lawyer from Italy. The first one is, I think it's, I really have no, I mean, Iran is a very difficult case, and it's been discussed this morning. I don't want to enter into the ins and outs of that, and it's, we, as far as Pakistan is concerned, it doesn't have very much. I'm sorry, my name is Tarek Haidar. I'm a member of the Oversight Board for Strategic Controls in Pakistan. The thing is, when he talked about Stuxnet, which is this sort of elephant in the room for cyber security or whatever, and arms control, I was quite struck that it's very extraordinary that he said that actually, if you can use something like that to slow down the Iranian centrifuges, this is a counter-proliferation, non-proliferation thing. This is a very subjective judgment, if you ask me, and it's been, the whole question of Iran's centrifuge capability and their thought is a very long issue. I mean, for instance, if the Iranians or somebody were to say, they are, Italy is one of the five powers which has got, countries which has got American nuclear weapons, and they can assist America to drop them somewhere, can we, you know, drop, slow down all their infrastructure, attack all their cyber warfare, attack their electrical or whatever transmission and other things? Or for the Americans, that, would that be permissible? Or would he be equally cavalier about that? I don't really know. I think it's quite extraordinary that you can say that we can attack another country for their, for having the nuclear capabilities that we already have or developing them. That's, I think, one thing. I think morally, I think it's a, it's a, it's a point worth considering. The second thing, very short, is he asked if cyber attacks are criminal or not. I think it's very clear that if you look at examples of individuals who've tried to penetrate, and they're mainly from the West, like English or American people, who've tried to penetrate DoD and other computers, systems in America, criminal charges have been filed against them, and they've been put in jail. So I don't think there's any particular, in the West, there is any particular ambiguity that if you try to penetrate cybersecurity at, at a particular level, you will be penalized. And even in the case of China, which is getting, Dr. Xu has brought out, the Americans have filed charges against American, Chinese people out there. So I think that, whether it's right or wrong is another matter, but the criminalization of that is very clear. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I saw a few other questions on the floor, so I'm prepared to take a few others. One in the back row, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the interesting presentations. I'm Siko van der Meer, working for the Klingon Institute in the Netherlands. I have a quite fundamental question regarding the title even of this, this session, cybersecurity arms control challenges. My question is, is arms control in the cyber area actually possible? Because as Dr. Xu already mentioned, cyber weapons are invisible. And I think when you talk about arms control, a key of arms control is verification. And if something is invisible, is it possible to ver, to verificate? And, well, maybe Dr. Noinek could answer the question, because you said that a first step could be confidence-building measures. Could there be a next step, or will it be impossible because of the invisibility and the impossibility of verification? Thank you.
Thank you. And one more.
Thank you. Oliver Baum from the UK Ministry of Defense. Thank you to all, all three speakers. You all mentioned in passing the work of the UN governmental group of experts and the other multinational bodies developing norms for cyber activities. I wondered if you could answer one of four questions. What norms and taboos do you see as currently existing, albeit even tentatively, in the cyber domain? Which norms and taboos would it be advantageous to strengthen or clarify? What would be the value of placing any of these norms on a legally binding footing? And what prospects do you see of any significant progress being made in this area? And I suppose perhaps a fifth, what are the, what are perhaps potential pitfalls for some of the proposals currently being mooted in the international arena?
Okay. I give you an opportunity to address these questions, and then I can back to the floor. Maybe we start, Marco, with you.
Yeah, okay. Oops. I'll start from the first question, and perhaps I wasn't clear, but I thought I actually said the opposite. I don't think a cyber operation, in the same way as I don't think it's a kinetic operation, for mere counter-proliferation purposes is a lawful one, especially if it is above the use of force, because such an operation would require an armed attack by the target state. If you are not the victim of such an armed attack, the operation is unlawful according to the UN Charter. I don't think that's the case of Iran. The mere development, if it is developing, the, the mere possession is not enough to justify an operation, be it kinetic or cyber, that amounts to a use of force, and that the UN Charter is very clear. I also think that even if it is below the, it's below the level of a use of force, such an operation would be unlawful, because it would be an intervention in the domestic affairs of Iran. If, and if, I used the Iran case more as, more as, if you want, as an example, more than as a real case, because as I said, there are many doubts about who did what and for what. In, in that case, even if it is below the level of a use of force, as I was saying, what the, 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 those that argue their legality should try to demonstrate is that Iran did breach some international law, and that the state that conducts that operation was actually entitled, that and not other states, to react by breaching international law itself, by conducting an unlawful intervention in the domestic affairs of, of Iran. So again, I reiterate that, I do not think that Stuxnet, if it was conducted for that purpose and by states against Iran, it would be consistent with international law. The second point, well, this is a, this is a long question. I'm not sure how long I have to answer it, because what kind of norms are suitable for cyber? I'm, I have to say, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a strong supporter of, 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 of the possible extension of existing rules, and I'm a bit skeptical about the need to draft a new treaty, be it an arms control treaty or be it a, 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 an arm coffee treaty. So if, if, if your question is about what possible legal regimes come into play, the question is a lot. It depends what we are talking about. And this also addresses the question of, I think, there was someone that mentioned criminal activities, there was yourself. Criminal law, cyber activities, cyber crime by individuals would be addressed by criminal law, okay? And therefore can be dealt with through the harmonization of criminal legislations in relation to cyber crime, by the conclusion of agreements, multilateral, bilateral, on judicial cooperation, on exchange of information, of extradition, perhaps, on, on, on those that commit cyber crimes. This is for individuals. This is for you and me, if we, we, we commit cyber crimes. But then there is another level, and that's why criminal law is not sufficient. Then you have the level of operations conducted by states. States, criminal law does not apply to states. States do not go to prison. States at best pay compensation if they reach an agreement on that, or if they go before an international court. That's the job of international law. So you also need international law. The question is what international law? If the focus in relation to cyber is the possession of cyber weapons, and perhaps this is also something that I think we should discuss, what a cyber weapon is, then you would have that branch of international law that deals with the possession of weapons, disarmament law, or nonproliferation law. If we are looking, as I think we should, at the use of that weapon, without focusing too much on the possession, which is hardly verifiable, in particular in the case of cyber, then you look at, if we are looking at military operations, the law of armed conflict, or international human rights law, and, and other branches, like international telecommunications law, and so on, and so forth. I'll probably stop here for the time.
Thank you. And I will go, give it over to you, Gudstein.
Okay. Thank you for the questions. To our colleague from the Netherlands, of course, I mean, the key question is, is arms control in cyber domain possible or not? The question is, what is arms control? I mean, arms control, modern arms control opens a toolbox of, of many, many things. So if you think in terms of treaty, I think treaties is far away. I mean, exactly, the reasons have been said, it is very complicated. It's hard to identify, even the possessor is hard to identify. Is it the use? How to verify? So, I mean, these problems are not solved. But nevertheless, arms control thinking can help to find solution for these kind of problems. We have clear criteria here, crisis stability, for example, restraint and constraint of using it against civilian targets. I mean, most of the users of internet think the internet is a civilian domain, you know? So if that is the, the status, then why not maintaining it? Why leaving it to military, to sabotage, to espionage? We can at least raise the question. It might be very idealistic, because thanks to Snowden, we know, know much more about, as you said, a big power, which is obviously interfering in that kind of system, you know? So the question is still, why are they doing it? How compatible is it with national law? I'm not a lawyer to answer these kind of questions. Nevertheless, the key question here is, of course, if an arms control treaty is on the horizon, we have to, of course, clarify what is the purpose, what is, is the scope, how to verify, and what is a cyber weapon? And our Chinese colleague made a very good description, how hard it is even to, to define what a cyber weapon is. It is certainly not a material weapon, but it can, some, it's an algorithm, you know? These are bits and bytes, which underline your sovereignty. I mean, no one knows exactly what the bits and bytes are. They, you know, they don't know state borders. So these are good reasons to say, no, it's, it's, it's not possible. But as we have seen with Stuxnet, you get some glimpse of a cyber weapon. The argument 10 years ago, when we first started talking about cyber arms control, people said, you know, the damage is, is not directed, it is spreading, and you don't really know which computer switched off, so because it's a mass phenomenon. Now we see with Stuxnet, it is a very selective thing. You can, you can switch off, for whatever the purpose is, but you can switch off material machines, which are using SCADA technology, you know? You can, you can jump over the air gap. I mean, this is certainly an inter, a very serious interference if you, if you transproject that on all industry, chemical industry, finance system, and so on, and so on. So obviously, there are some kinds of cyber weapons, but you have to define what it really is, and that, that's very hard to do. Nevertheless, you can also... Nevertheless, you can also try, and arms control is not only originated in the sense that someone has a weapon, but what kind of damage are you doing? And we, of course, here are interfering with the international humanitarian law, and I think our Italian colleague already referred on that, because here we have clearly some principles, you know? So we have the political sciences to discuss what is a principle and what is a norm and so on and so on. But this goes in your direction, I don't know, I'm a physicist, not a lawyer, but there are principles here, discrimination, non-interference with civilian subjects. So it's a big difference whether you attack an electric generator in a hospital or electrical generator in a military barracks, for example. There's a difference. And by the way, we only spoke about Stuxnet. Obviously, military armed forces have already used cyber, or let's say, electronic warfare against air defense systems. This happened during Kosovo, this happened during bombing the Al-Qibbar reactor in Syria. In Ronald Reagan's memoirs, you can find that the CIA blew up a pipeline with an embedded ship, and so on and so on. So these systems are there, you can of course argue that they are only simply there for military purpose, obviously it is sabotage. So the question is then, is sabotage lawful or not? I leave that discussion to our lawyers. But you see, if you start thinking in terms of arms control in that very complicated subject of indivisible weapons, then you could come to some kind of conclusion, and we still don't have the fantasy to think what all can happen. And I mean, we are getting more and more vulnerable, obviously, states are preparing, the question is again, for what are they preparing? Defense is acceptable, offense against which target seems to be in some cases not lawful, so why not simply prohibit it? So why not talking about no first use? Why couldn't states, for example, not talk about a common agenda, what they think would be prohibited, you know? And I think arms control, if you go to other areas of arms control, other complicated domains, space for example, outer space is different from land, sea and air. The military always says, you know, we are, conflict went from land to sea to space, to air and to space, we don't had a space war actually, you know? But we also don't have an agreement, a treaty prohibiting kinetic force of kinetic energy through satellites. So this is, if you combine space and outer space, it might be fruitful to think what kind of norms you can transform to specific restraints or provisions. Sorry for speaking so long.
Questions are complicated, so I give it to Xue for your comment.
Very brief answers to some of the questions, I think. Firstly, about cyber, if is cyber arms control possible? When I first, when we prepared this report, we are very enthusiastic, and as our work goes on, we find that it's not as easy as we originally thought. My simple answer now is, now there are a lot of controversies, a lot of confusions with regard to cyber definitions, what is cyber warfare, what is cyber weapons, and even, and so on. But the good thing is that now, on the original level, on bilateral level, and among the scholars on the reading frame of the UN discussions have already begun. I think with these efforts going on, I think gradually we can have a clearer idea in the future. It's possible, maybe, but that would be very hard. And we've got the question to our colleague from the British Defence Ministry, whether there are some norms. A brief answer is that so far there is no specific answer, norms for cyber things. But, you know, last joint, last last joint, joint 2013, the third UNGE reached consensus report, personally I think that is a kind of milestone report. The report reached a lot of consensus between the participating countries. For example, it already, it acknowledged the principles of, for example, the applicability of international law in subspace, particularly the UN Charter. I think that is a kind of, that is kind of progress already being made, and I think in the future, all countries, we should make progress on this, on this basis, rather than looking backward for our future work. And of course now, we also hope that the new GGE will take more concrete work or steps forward. And personally, I think we should take more concrete measures, for example, on fighting cyber crime, cyber terrorism, and limit the harms caused by the, especially those malicious uses of the cyber tools. And finally, I think on this kind of cyber things, now I think the most urgent thing for now for many countries is to, we should work together rather than accuse each other, and we work together to clarify this kind of confusing ideas, because cyber is new to, for everybody, for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I have four questions, sort of marks in the floor. I will start with you and then more to anyone, everyone I have noted to.
Thank you. Marco Fai from the Peace Research Institute Frankfurt. Brief, I would like to challenge the notion that cyber weapons are actually unique or that different from other weapons, or at least pose the question whether it's a difference in kind. We heard that cyber weapons are invisible. Well, other weapons are invisible too, and for example, chemical weapons in a sense are invisible. Cyber weapons have a material dimension, and that is the code. They also need to get from A to B, right? I mean, in order to get Stuxnet to do what it apparently succeeded to do, it needed to get into these machines, and apparently that was why USB transfer. Anyways, there is a material dimension. Also, we heard that the US claims that they kind of solved the problem of attribution. So they claim that they can actually see where certain code comes from. Then we heard that they don't physically kill people. Okay, other weapons exist that don't kill people in a physical way, for example EMP or non-lethal weapons, and yet we don't think that that makes a difference from other weapons that we talk about in terms of arms control. Also, what about cyber weapons can discriminate? I think Dr. Xu said they are selective, that is, you can always know when you apply one that it only hits the target that it is meant to. Stuxnet, as far as I know, spread way beyond the Iranian facilities. Okay, it didn't damage any other facilities as far as we know, but when it comes to, let's imagine someone wants to target a power plant, and the malware spreads as Stuxnet has done before, what happens then? Is that still considered a discriminant or selective weapon? So in a sense, are cyber weapons really that different from other weapons, and does that makes them unsuitable for arms control to be applied to? Thanks.
Thank you. I have a question there in the back, second row back.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for some very insightful comments. Mario Levita from the Carnegie Endowment. I actually wanted to volunteer a comment rather than a question, but I hope a comment would trigger some response. I'm somewhat slightly more encouraged about the prospects of doing something constructive in this field for three separate reasons. The first is, I think everyone understands, and practically everybody understands, that the danger inherent in this, to progress, stability, whatever, and so on, is so huge that even people who tended to look at the relative advantage that you can generate from cyber warfare are, I think, beginning to revisit that premise. The second reason, I think that contrary to what we used to think, attribution has made a fair amount of progress. It's not immediate, it's not sure, but the probability that you would fail, completely fail with attribution, I think, has been minimized considerably. And thirdly, I think related to this, this invisibility of cyber weapons, again, I think, is no longer believed to be as easy as it used to be. So that's the grounds for optimism. Where I think we have one thing to avoid and two things to aim for are the following. I think to avoid, we need to, not to look at the weapon but at the activity, as something we go after. So not the weapon itself, but what type of activity would be prohibited, and the second thing is not to try and ban but to regulate. I think it would be impossible to ban. Lastly, in terms of the challenges, let me highlight just two or three challenges which I think are going to be, in my judgment, the most difficult. You could look at the challenges in terms of players, which players would need to be there and which players would not be, would not be, I mean, sort of absolutely germane. I think if we talked about players, I think, you know, Russia, I think, would be the most difficult to rope in, because of major reasons that we don't need to get to. But if not looking at specific countries, I think one issue is to carve out espionage or CNE. I think there is no chance of regulating that. That would be a problem, but I don't think an insurmountable problem in trying to do regulation. I think computer network influence would again be something that would be, would need to be carved out in some fashion. And third, which might be the most interesting to actually deal with, would be the active defense aspect. Those who have been following the debate, I think, would realize that what is really happening now as a result of the realization that computer network defense by itself, in the classical way, it simply doesn't yield the results, so I'm increasingly looking at active, at active defense. And where do you draw the line between offense and active defense is not completely straightforward, and therefore I think we need to look at this. But one last point, which I think we need to think about, in my case, in my judgment, would be the make or break, would have to be a principle that everything that occurs from one sovereign territory is in essence something that the state has to assume responsibility for. I think in the absence of this, we would simply privatize cyber warfare, and I think that would be the most dangerous thing to do. Now, some of it is already privatized, but I think that's where the trend is going to be, and therefore I think this ought to be one of those major guiding principles. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one in the back, and then here.
Thank you very much. WPS Sedhu with Brookings India. Two points, I think one by way of a comment, but again, you know, I think it will also generate some responses, and I'd be grateful for that. The one issue with cyber, you know, apart from everything else we've talked about, is also the speed. So for example, General Chilton, who is the head of STRATCOM, the former head of STRATCOM, is on record saying that, you know, today if you're looking at a nuclear exchange, you've got 15 minutes. In the case of a cyber attack, it's going to take seconds. So, you know, the kind of the amount of time to respond, react, et cetera, is going to be of a, you know, magnitude of order which we haven't quite sort of seen. The second is, you know, I just want to take up the point Gutz Rudnik made about, you know, how arms control has been preceded by CBMs. That's correct. But CBMs have very often been preceded by crises, which have, you know, triggered CBMs, and, you know, we haven't had cases of CBMs coming, you know, ab initio without sort of crisis. So the question then is, what would be a global crisis equivalent of the Berlin crisis or the Cuban Missile Crisis that we might see in the cyber arena, which is likely to bring the key actors together? Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have one more question here in the second row.
Thank you. I'm Frank Asbeck from the European External Action Service. First of all, I think the panel has made very clear that cybersecurity is indeed a major challenge for arms control, if it is, let's say, solvable by these means at all. And I think one of the conclusions certainly was that one of the tools that might be effective are TCBMs, confidence building measures. It was, in particular, Dr. Xu has said, we need rules, and I think it was even said, we do not have rules. We do, however, have one international treaty on that. It is the International Convention Against Cybercrime, signed in Budapest. And the big advantage of this convention is that it institutionalizes international exchange and cooperation in case of cybercrime. So it has in itself thus a confidence building effect because it establishes links. This is one of the reasons why the European Union sees this as a model which should be accepted on a much wider basis. So my questions to you would be, don't you agree with me?
Well, thank you, and I see one more question here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Sonia Drobys. I'm a legal officer with the Verification Research Training and Information Centre, also known as Vertik, a nonprofit organization based in London. Just a very quick comment rather than question further to what Marco said and the discussion on norms and what's already existing. So you mentioned the application of criminal law especially. I think that would, that would apply in fact to respond to a cyber attack, for instance, the use of a cyber weapon, maybe something that we could discuss here as well, and maybe this is narrowing down the topic a bit, but as you mentioned the Stuxnet episode, I thought I would say a few words about nuclear security. I think it's also important to mention the role of, for instance, the IIA Nuclear Security Series that include one specific one on computer security at nuclear facilities that set up a set of guidelines and principles that have to be applied at nuclear facilities to prevent a cyber attack to occur. And I think the IIA Division of Nuclear Security is working on further guidance and guidelines that could apply to computer or cyber security as well. And we could also mention the role of the World Institute for Nuclear Security, which does a lot of work on computer security at nuclear facilities as well. So this is maybe narrowing down the topic a bit, but I think it's something that's worth mentioning here.
Well, thank you for the questions. Now, we have 15 minutes left, so I impose a strict five-minute rule on each panelist to address the questions, and I would start with Xue this time.
In a reverse order, with regard to the Budapest Convention, I participated in some conferences here in Europe. A lot of European friends talked about this question. My idea is that China's
My idea is that China participates also, a lot of discussions, almost all discussions concerning Budapest Convention, and China's stated its positions on it. But also, our European friends tell me that this Budapest Convention is not as effective as we imagined, even among the member states, because nobody likes to share information with others. This is the reality you are facing. And last May, I think, in Munich, French friends told me that the Council of Europe tried to revise this convention to make it maybe more acceptable to other countries. And that gentleman mentions the privatization of cyber war. I think this is a very interesting topic. I think we can have more discussion, even, I think we can talk, discuss this question together, in more details in the future. With regard to the visibility and invisibility, or the possibility of the cyber arms control, now, as I said just now, now we have no settled answers to this kind of questions. We are in a process of debating, of discussion. Maybe finally we can get some consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, being a lawyer, I would not like to end on a legal note, so I therefore ask Goetz to go next. Sorry, I therefore ask Marco to go next.
Thank you. Right, I'll just pick up some points, otherwise I won't stay within the five minutes. I'll start from the point that I think is most important, which is your question about whether I agree, or we agree with you. On one point, I don't. The fact that there are no rules. What there aren't is specific rules that specifically deal with cyber weapons, as with regard to state activities. Because with regard to cybercrime, we do have, for instance, the Budapest Convention. The fact that with regard to state activities in cyberspace, there are no specific rules, does not mean that there are no rules, does not mean that we are in a legal black hole, and states can do whatever they want in cyberspace. Because again, my point is, and if you allow some self-promotion, I demonstrated in my book, the point is that existing rules do apply, and are flexible enough. I am a strong believer in the high flexibility of existing rules, that were able to deal already with weapons that did not exist when they were drafted. I'm talking, for instance, about nuclear weapons, the Geneva Conventions, and the Hague Conventions before them, which contain those full on discrimination, proportionality, metering, necessity, et cetera, that we've been talking about, and that apply with some perhaps creative approach in certain cases, or with reasoning by analogy, also to cyber weapons, in the same way, to certain cyber weapons, at least when they cause the same results as kinetic weapons. Which leads us to the question of whether cyber weapons are special or not. I agree that the specialty of cyber weapons is highly underestimated. I do believe that if we think about that, that they don't look that special as they look at first sight. They have a point of departure, cyber attack, and they have a point of, and the target, which help territorialise these operations. The problem of attribution can also be, I think, somehow, it's not that serious as perhaps it is. From a technical point of view, perhaps, I'm not sure, that's what I call identification, but attribution is also a legal process, is to establish whether a person, because states are abstract entities, whether a person actually acts for a state. So you don't, in cyber operations, you don't, the process is longer, if you want the usual. First of all, you have to identify the point of departure, the computer, the system. Then you have to identify the person which is behind it, which may be difficult. You may have an IP that has been spoofed, you may have a botnet, et cetera. And once you have the person, then, and only then, you have the legal attribution of the conduct of that person to a state. And to establish that, you apply the normal legal rules on attribution, that again, there's no need for special ones. The other point I wanted to make, I agree with the points that the gentleman over there has made, in particular, that it is a behaviour that we have to look at, at the use, we have to regulate the use of cyber weapons by states and by individuals in the context of cybercrime, and not really their existence or their possession, which looks to me very difficult, and I'm not sure there's any political will to do so. And finally, the challenges by certain actors have also been mentioned, in particular Russia. But I would add, I would add another one, which is more serious, I think, the challenger, more challenging actor, which is a non-state actor. The fact that non-state actors play such an important part in cyberspace, that's really the problem. There's also a problem, also for international law, which is built on states, and does not really take non-state actors' activities into account, and that's the real problem, which is not limited to cyberspace, it's a general problem for a law that was conceived in a time where states were essentially the main subjects, and the main actors on the international scenes. And finally, my very last point, the point I disagree on, the one point I disagree on of your points, the fact that states should be responsible for everything that happens on their territory. I disagree, because this would again mark a departure from existing rules. That's not what happens. If something bad, something harmful for another state starts from the territory of state, state ace, they may be responsible for not preventing it, for not taking all precautions that it should have taken to prevent that action against another state, but not for the action itself. Okay, so it's more of a passive, if you want, wrong than an active one. Of course, this has to police, if perhaps that's not the right question, have to make sure that their territory, included their cyber territory, so to speak, is not used for purposes harmful for other states. But they, I'm not sure it's possible to consider them responsible for everything that happens there.
Thank you. And Goetz, so you.
Thank you, Anakin, and also, by the way, for sharing the panel. And you were quite silent. I mean, one should know that Anakin writes a lot about these kind of things, and it would be also quite interesting to talk about the effect of the cyberwar discussions on the internet governance issue. We didn't have time to talk about it, but I think that's a major issue. So what kind of approach, multi-stakeholder approach, bottom-up, top-down? By the way, I think Anakin started by saying, 98, the Russians started about the term information weapon. We should have in mind, and this is a reminder here, that some others speak about, not about cyber weapons, this is Western notion, but about information weapon. And of course, there is a big disagreement between some states and some Western states, what that means, and how this could interfere to, let's say, national laws, which is one of the reasons why the Russian, Chinese Code of Conduct didn't, was not accepted by the West. But this is another debate, but we see, these things are connected. So first remark, second remark goes to Sonia and her correct hint on nuclear security. We focus very much on cyber weapon. What is a cyber weapon? And I think our colleague from Frankfurt is right, by differentiating this picture a little bit. Nevertheless, cyber weapon as such is not the problem. The problem is a strategic cyber attack, which is more or less prepared by a state against another state. And this could be a very serious thing for a modern state. This has to be prepared. This costs a lot of money. It's not so that the cyber weapon is, we don't speak about some soft malware, which can, everybody can download from the internet. We speak really about an attempt by combining huge computers with malign code, to produce disruptive software, which could lead to a big disaster, if you target nuclear facilities, if you start targeting nuclear communication systems, if you start targeting, I mean, the question is still whether this is feasible or not, you know, so we of course think that these things are very much secured. I'm not so sure, given the current technology, that this is really true. But this could really cause a lot of damage, and we should have that in mind. It has not occurred, that's true, but that doesn't mean this would hold forever. I think about the Budapest Convention, again, we don't, I do not speak about crime. I mean, crime in itself is a big economical problem, and I wished there would be more countries signing the Budapest Convention and cooperating on that field. But the dividing line between crime and these tools and a strategic cyber attack is not so big, you know, so these tools are more or less connected, and I think that's important. Last comments to Paul Sidhu and Ariel Levitt, by the way, I'm happy to see you again. You are right, speed matters very much, and this is exactly the reason why I think we have to talk about crisis stability, which would need reactions in milliseconds, it's not only seconds, it's milliseconds. And about what is offence and what is defence, active defence, passive defence. I think states should start talking about it. If there are stockpiles, equipments, tools in preparation for it, then they should start talking about it. I think that was my message here, and I mean, we always receive wise interpretations, you are absolutely right, Paul, CBMs are preceded by crises. The question is, should we wait until such a crisis happens, you know? So I think it's the responsibility of scientists and lawyers to point to the problems which might occur. Hopefully, they do not occur. But they are politically used, and this has tremendous consequences, and I, first time, Ariel, I completely agree with you on all these kind of issues, but I think all these challenges need to be implemented, and they have to be brought to the international forum. And I think what we actually see, some working groups articulating it, and I would be happy in the next year if big powers, including the Chinese, which are the biggest in terms of people, would continue and could help to find a common language on these kind of issues, and so that we have a common nomenclature, so that we can extend the thinking of international law also to the cyber domain. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for all the presentations, the questions, and the answers. And there is no doubt that the topic of cyber arms control is difficult to exhaust, in one session, probably in one year, and then probably, I'm afraid, in a decade. Now, I very much hope though that the European Union Nonproliferation Consortium creeps addressing this topic, and that we can return for many happy updates, and then more challenging questions and answers. Thank you again, everyone, for participating, and I look forward to meeting again. Thanks.